It's six o'clock, I'm gonna call the public hearing to order for our referendum and I'm gonna ask you to please join me with a pledge of allegiance. Thank you, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. With that, I am going to turn it over to our assistant superintendent for business, Mr. Keegan, who's gonna take us through our referendum, the vote being.
I'm actually, I'm actually gonna turn it over to our superintendent.
Okay.
That's okay, not to, not to pull the double handoff on you there, Paul, but.
Nope.
Dan, uh. Oh, sorry, I got it. Let's do that quick, share. Presentation, share, thank you, Jill.
Okay, good evening, with this proposed capital project, we are excited because there's many different things that were identified that we need to do updates. We had the voters approve back in twenty-one, twenty-two, the renovations of CNS High School, Lake Shore, Cicero Elementary, both in Phase One. And also, the CNS pool addition, that was approved back then, as well as EPC project. And the chillers at the junior high that we discussed at that time, because they had been failing. But this proposed budget is about safety and security upgrades, Gillette Road Middle School, HVAC, and North Syracuse Early Education Program. Roof and water, and Gillette Road Middle School Athletic Complex site work. So, in the proposed proposition, the safety and security was the main piece that we wanted to make sure we were addressing. Safety and security throughout the district, when you talk about locks, entrances, different things about windows. We wanna make sure we're constantly doing upgrades to make sure we can add to the protection of our, of our, of our teachers, our students. And employees that are in our buildings. With Gillette Road, some of the things there, we're replacing the heating and ventilation in the, in the building. And it's at its end of life, and in doing that, it's the only middle school, or the only secondary school, that does not have air conditioning. So, the fact that we're going in and having to replace the heating, we're going to be adding air conditioning to the building. Now, in the North Syracuse Early Education Program, we are going to be changing, replacing some water mains in a complete major roof recoating. Because again, that is at its end of life. And the last thing on there that shows the eight million is proposed work, including a multi-purpose turf field, along with walking trail and parking lot. One of the things, if you know about, anything about Central New York, especially in the spring, very wet, very difficult in the seasons. When there are certain sports, sporting events going on, one of the things we're looking at is making sure, if going to a turf field, it's not just one field, being the baseball field. It's a multi-purpose, so it can be soccer, it can be lacrosse, it can also have field hockey. Play on these surfaces, which is really going to enhance some, some opportunities for students. Well, some of the different things as far as the, the work, we talked about securing our entries, the upgrades, and things that I started to mention. Security film, installing security film at the exterior door and group gathering areas. Didn't talk about campus notification, but our PA systems, trying to make sure we're upgrading our PA systems. So that people can communicate across the, the buildings at the drop of a hat, when there are a crisis or an emergency. Our fire alarm systems are just aging, and we wanna make sure that those are always up to date. And one of the things that's up there, talks about exterior signage, so let me explain what that is. So, when law enforcement has to pull up or come to a building or a site, the exterior signage that is on our buildings, it makes it easy to identify. So, they can expedite their response time. Two-way radio systems, one of the things that's been talked about is sometimes, what if you're, the internet or certain things are down? Trying to go back to where buildings and locations can communicate across the district in an emergency. Because one of the things I think they, they realize when there's been a crisis, and I'll just use the World Trade Center. Trying to communicate by cellphone, it couldn't happen, the system was overloaded, so we'll always be able to, to get to buses and buildings by using the two-way radio system. Keying systems, just again, aging locks and doors, and so, we're looking at rekeying many of our, our locking systems. And the thing that's there, wayfinding, now what that is, it's our interior signage. So, we have some, several large buildings, we're the, we're the largest school district in the county outside of Syracuse City. So, when you walk into a building and being able to know this way to the gymnasium, this way to this location. It makes it easy for any type of emergency response to find their way very quickly. And then we talk about doors and hardware, interior and exterior door replacement. These are just some snapshots of some of the, the entryways and security film. It shows campus notification, fire, keying systems, wayfinding, if you see in the bottom there, on the left, it really clearly identifies where you're going. And what's where in the hallway, and the bottom right has some interior new doors. So, on the top there, you see Gillette Road, and again, we talked about the HVAC system, and making sure that we're looking at doing, uh, because it's at its end of life. And then the bottom shows the roof at Main Street, and then some interior, some piping, we're trying to move with the water systems, those pipes are quite, quite old.
Oh.
They are galvanized.
So, this is a rendering of the athletic complex, and so, it is a multi-purpose field. You can see, there is a, a baseball stadium within the drawings here. We've had some times, we live in clay, New York, and a lot of the fields, a lot of the soil is of clay, does not drain well. And going to this type of surface, we're one of several districts that are also going to a turf surface, so we don't have to compete with the elements. But if we were going to do that, we wanted to make sure we can get more use out of it than just one, one athletic team. So, you can see that there is a full soccer field drawn on this surface as well. Also, this can be used for lacrosse, as well as field hockey, so you're gonna be able to have multiple sports, be able to use the facility.
I could just make one comment, I spoke with a citizen today, who didn't know, we don't have a baseball, did this, the high school baseball field, so we only have three baseball fields. Five teams, and modify the freshman, the JV, and the fourth team. And this, this one field is the only baseball field on the campus, so.
I don't, I don't think there's any other drawings, Don, do you wanna talk about some of the?
So. People don't often wonder what the maintenance implications are when you put a turf field in, and as you can see from the slide. We're counting on this field lasting fifteen years, we think that that should be an acceptable life for it. And that doesn't mean the whole thing has to be redone, just the surface needs to be replaced at fifteen years. And when we look at the costs, it's pretty expensive to maintain a natural turf grass surface. It typically is three or four times more expensive than synthetic turf. It requires a lot of, of tender loving care, and, and one of the things we've gotten from the community is, we only maintain our baseball field during baseball season. And that's a frustration to our baseball coach and other folks, because they expect us to be on that field twelve months a year. But the reality of it is we have other sports, other campuses, and we're trying to utilize our limited maintenance and operations staff most effectively. What this will allow us to do is not do that maintenance during the season, because we won't need to on a turf field. But also, in the off-season, we'll have a surface that, for fall baseball, for summer baseball, for the various sports that Dan talked about. We'll be able to get on there, and it won't cost us any additional amount. And the grooming, we've gotten good, we have at grooming and maintaining a turf field, because we have a turf field up at CNS for football and lacrosse and, and soccer up there as well, so. The total cost of the project is sixty-one point two million dollars, the work's gonna be financed over, over, and aided over a fifteen-year period. And building aid's gonna cover most of the cost, but as with any capital project, one of the things we look at is our current debt service. We look at all the debt we have outstanding, and we try to marry up, adding new debt when old debt falls off. And the goal is between debt service falling off and the, the building aid that we get, to minimize the impact to the taxpayer of any project that we do. And so, in this particular project, it's gonna be a tax increase of point four one percent, or nine dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home before star. This is the actual proposition, which basically kind of says everything we, we just talked about, asking the voters to approve a sixty-one point two million dollar project and the financing thereof. And this is the timetable, so today is the public hearing. And the public referendum will be next Tuesday, from six AM to nine PM. And that'll be conducted both here at the district office and at Cicero Elementary School. If you live south of forty-one, you vote here, north of forty-one, you vote at the elementary school, and then we'll start work with the SED submission, hopefully, in about a year. And start a construction the following fall. And that would be for safety and security work, because that's the priority, and then the Gillette Road and Main Street and infrastructure work will all be done. SED submission December twenty-four, and estimated start of construction fall twenty-five.
That's. That's all for the slides that we have, if there are any questions, concerns, or things that we can answer. I, I, I think you are.
Absolutely. We're looking at all, all doors, and I'm not sure if you wanna comment on.
So, we use air, both security. Your first line of defense, blocking, that's true. Your second line of defense is any obstacles within the core. Last defense is your classroom. We do all those. Classroom doors currently are, are, we have, use those classroom doors also. Then true. There are, there are required vision panels on doors, so we can't cool away with them. Honestly, we want to go through the whole district, replace the classroom door, with an attitude raised door. And then once, I just got, and renovate really important. So, like Bear Road, just got renovated, state-of-the-art systems in. Our goal is to. Put those same systems in each of our buildings, whereas practice. As we have buildings there being renovated in the near future, and renovate them as well, but not everything is going to be equal tomorrow. But over time, the same standard. Bear Road has a new PAs, that'll be the standard across the district, so we create just wide communication as well as building. So, yes, lockdown, we are rolling that, making more accessible to more staff.
So, I think, to answer part of your question, I, I showed that the voters already approved renovation at Lake Shore and at Cicero. So, as we do those projects, just like Bear Road, doors and everything that you're asking, those will be replaced. But existing doors, they'll be looked at, but definitely a lot of the locks and, and keying systems throughout the district are, are gonna be adjusted.
Yeah, Pete, by the way. So.
Touchpad?
Cool. And also the car. And there's, then it just that nose and bill. Is that part of this, so in the new building projects, that we renovate, Bear Road has to go on the classroom. Bad issue. But our buildings are ready to have access. On several. For, either interior, front, primary, for interior classrooms, and really more standardized. Walk the high school, there's five different masterpieces. I know, you've been around, we want to reset that, but we also want to build. So, there's the birds, staff have to, in safety, and not stop even though.
I think it's important to say our buildings are safe. It's just, it's just, it's you're constantly chasing it right through to continually get the best. We have security entries at the majority of the buildings, we have security guards, all of a sudden there is.
Single, single point of entry, yeah. Dennis, you were gonna ask a question?
The impact this new edge of left road for the construction process, I know when you guys did Bear Road, some of the students were shit, you know, maybe they're in Lake Shore for a year. So, I think, is there gonna be any impact part of the student places, are you gonna be there until, while they're all?
We're, we're not looking at any relocation of students at Gillette at all.
I was wondering for the field, it looks like a parking lot now, up in the top.
Well, that's where the parking is? Yeah, it's just not paved.
I was thinking that was farther over the board.
These two here, these two lots both exist now.
No, I was looking at top lot, oh, that's what I said, it looks like mine was near Thompson, Thompson Road.
That's the back parking lot.
That's the back, okay, that's the current lot. Thompson's down here. Thompson's the bottom of the picture.
Oh, I got it.
Yeah, and actually, it's funny you say that, we had a lot of discussion about can we create some access down to get to Thompson Road. Right, probably be, just doesn't work, and you know, we take away too much, too much.
Oh, we, we. It's. It, it is. We wanted to create some relief, but it's just.
You know, we made a right hand turn when we come out there. A little bit of an idea for, for, we just moved in like, better in the right hand only, makes a huge difference.
Pete, you had another question, sure.
I'm sorry, yeah, it is, uh. Yeah, no, it is, the debt reduction is, is significant, I don't have the exact dollar amount and percentage off the top of my head. But the combination, as I said, of, of state aid and debt reduction is substantially covering the project cost. And the good news about this project is, you know, you know this as a former superintendent, highly atable work. The place where it's not highly atable is at our, at Gillette Road Athletic Complex, where we're just getting over that maximum cost allowance. For, for the work that we're doing out on the field there, but we think it's a worthwhile investment that's gonna create a facility that can be used twelve months a year. High school, that's the varsity baseball field.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and, yeah, but the way our camp, we try to leverage all of our campuses, so that's our four softball fields, so varsity JV, every softball. Softball team plays there, our baseball field plays there, our varsity boys soccer, their grass field is there, and they play there when it's playable. And they play on the turf when it's not, so, this is a, this is, yeah, between the high school and Gillette, that's the, the kind of the primary athletic facilities. The, the third one is our junior high here, we use the junior high quite a bit for the fields, they were great and they drain well. Oh, did you?
Probably will know the truth, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Dennis.
It looks like, based on the timeline, we're voting you're out for SED approval, is, is, I don't know, how, the timeline? So, does that mean last year's vote for improvements are already approved by SED, and we're in the phase?
Their base stages.
We're in all different stages, so. Right now, we're, we're aiming for, CNS on Phase One, the APAC is private. Condition design on Phase Two, put the HVAC in, and chimney up for it, renovating, up for CNS working out. Add that, add them, we're planning for the smaller projects, we're very beginning, we're not on the short end of the tool. So, if we still have, past year, we, we, um. So, we have a phase plan, you know, all the, kind of, contact, do all that work, see here. Put all the other schools in front of it, done as well, so, we're strategically trying to, work with our architect, structure plan, to understand the market, know where the label is. State, we brought a smart way to, that for us.
And I think the other, the other reality that we're dealing with is that SED approval takes, design takes time, SED approval takes time. You know, the bidding, the contract, and the planning, all the work, making sure we do it in a way that's less, least, and broken to students. That's why we're trying to get as much work in the queue as is appropriate, so that we can move from one project to the other and keep making progress. There's our district, it's a lot of work.
Was my, Dennis, like there was chillers or something outside of the press corps, and.
Yeah.
So, that.
Those go right in.
Or that, uh, those people were, uh, so, we might, they were right.
And usually, driving, it was the other channel, the SED, from the, tomorrow, we provide a drive up. Because, putting time, delivery, time, manufacturing, time, it takes longer and longer. And today, promising one thing today, deliver a whole different time mark.
And a railway strike doesn't help.
Do this, so, so, supply chain, very, very problematic, probably the time, selling projects. We either input on high supply, pre-order all day equipment. And if you're gonna do that, we're still working on that very long.
And I'm glad you mentioned the chiller thing, because I think that's a good illustration of, of, we did our building condition survey, we looked at what we needed to do. We knew we had an old chiller at the junior high, this wasn't like brand new information, but in the priority of everything, we said, we think we can make that thing last. And it died, so, so then we had to rent a chiller, bring it in on tractor trailer, because we needed to get the building chill for June, the summer, and September. Because that's the hottest period, we run our special at summer.
That's, that's the one thing, we run the countywide special education program, they come to us. So, three out of our four secondary buildings have air, but, so we run the countywide program at either the junior high or Rocks Middle. But then there's Bosie Summer School that we pair up between us and Beville. So, our high school and our junior high and Rocks Middle are all being used most summers. Gillette is not, because you can't, and it doesn't have air, so what we, what the goal is, by getting that, the HVAC and then the air conditioning. We can flip-flop programs in the summer, where we can give rocks some relief, allow maintenance and operations to do, just upkeep. And run programs in the summer at, at Gillette, so, in doing that, it's just gonna help, just alleviate some stressors on the buildings. And allow us to provide programming in the summers that, that maybe we didn't have before. And just as an aside, we are going to, with Micron coming in, we are going to run a, a chip camp that they've talked about. And there could be other things that we eventually end up doing in our summers.
Traffic with my friend and families and everything, I mean, I know schools have been dropping in the moment over the year, but.
I, I think they're anticipating growth across the county, so, looking at a demographic study to include potential growth with Micron is what we're currently starting to undertake. And just trying to get a better sense of, when you talk about forty thousand additional workers in the area. It's going to hit us, Liverpool, every school district in the county, and I think Oswego County's gonna have to pay attention, because Burton and Central Square is right there. But again, what I, what I am clarifying for people, where Micron's going to be located, is entirely in the North Syracuse Central School District.
Dennis, you know, if you've been here a while, that North Syracuse, uh, was kind of overpriced. And so, we finally started to see our enrollment decline, when we were feeling comfortable in our buildings, we felt like, hey, we got some little work here. We can start to make some decisions and, and whatnot about where to place programs and people, and. Now, with Micron coming in, it's making us rethink that, oh, wow, you know, we, we, we never thought that we'd be looking at this, this enrollment dramatically, it could happen.
Just traffic on Route thirty-one in and of itself, it's gonna have to be totally looked at, the ramp for eighty-one on and off. What they do off of Stern's Road, because there's only one way off of four eighty-one, when you get a Caudanoy, you can get off. But you can't re-enter, so all that traffic either comes at the eighty-one entrance, up in Cicero, or over towards Bear Road. If they come by Wegmans and go that way, so the traffic pattern in and of itself, where it's currently two lane, in my head, and I'm not. It, it has to be no less than four lane, but I would think you may need five lanes for a center turn lane, for people to be able to turn left or right. But that's, that's for another group to study.
But Thursday night.
Thursday night, there will be a kind of a listening session, a town hall meeting at our junior high school. Ryan McMahon will be kind of leading that, and so that will be at five thirty on Thursday at our junior high school.
Those instances are common, a lot of children cross, because they're five-year-old, they're just that high yet.
Speaking of long-range plan and the timeline, for that, we've got a building, it's covered, we're involved, right, it's kind of staged out. Also, pretty weird the way it's, this is on, and it reminds me of that. I was just gonna say, when you mentioned that, the first thing that comes to me is, that's about passing the floor, if you feel, you both. But what we're trying to balance, is that, you have more debt being used, you have, the next few years, if you plan that out, that's, you just don't wanna see this going.
What it is, it is. Operating forms of pay, or long-term savings, that, that's all the, that's classroom. We don't mind. We have a few that would play upon classrooms, because it's, it's a problem, it's, that's a new, that is, this field is, and, you can, that, it's, 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 it's. Just doing handles, it's not really, it's really.
Remember, it's like.
And I just, I, I, we didn't say it, you've said it already, but, it's not unusual for a baseball team to play one game.
Oh, no.
It's just, they have to go, we have to go rent a field at OCC, or, right, I mean, it's just been a nightmare for baseball. Um, so. That, solid to OCC. Totally, whatever. Yes. And we're lucky to have Kirk's the managing partner of the firm, and lives here in the district, so, he's not only an architect, but an historian. But he knows the history, he's known for the history.
The, the voters next, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, six AM, nine PM, here in the Cicero well.